The Boyhood Home of the noted poet Kenneth Rexroth. And another honoring better homes on Elmer Street. I know some council members were able to join too. It was really special to see a number of people actually travel back to honor ancestors or to come back to the neighborhood that they grew up in. And a reminder that the racial integration that I know I took for granted growing up in that neighborhood was something that took a lot of courage to bring about. I want to mention that the budget process is well underway and thank the council for good work in the early stages of preparing that 2018 budget. We've tried something new this year, which is a preseason meeting, a resident input meeting as early as May. We had about 20 community members that tend to share their ideas. And then we had another budget workshop on July 8th with support from the Neighborhood Resources Council. And we had about 20 residents there asking their questions. We've already collected about 100 questions and comments related to budget priorities. This will be responding over the next few weeks. I wanted to remind everyone that this is really the second of a two-year process to get the priority-based budgeting strategy locked in. And again, we appreciate the council because it wouldn't be possible without your cooperation and attention throughout the process in order to implement this new approach. A couple of congratulations are due to our admin and finance team. One, the Popular Annual Financial Report came out today. I encourage you to direct your constituents to it because it's really a plain English version. We have the CAFRA, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. That satisfies the reporting requirements of the state, but it's not always intelligible. And so the administration finance department took an initiative to create what we call the PAFRA, the Popular Annual Financial Report, which is a little easier to understand. So there's a link up on the city website. Just pushed it out on Facebook and Twitter. And hopefully when you're getting questions about the budget, you can point residents toward it. We also learned in the last few days that the city got the GFPA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for last year's budget. That's a national organization that recognizes municipal finance around the country. And there were only two communities in Indiana that got that recognition. One of them was South Bend, the other one was Fisher's. So I really want to congratulate the finance team for that. An update also that I wanted to make you aware of in terms of the roles and responsibilities within our admin and finance teams as we head into that 2018 budget preparation. As everybody on the council knows, John Murphy and Jen Hockenhall have both been doing superb work in the leadership of our city finance and management. And in order to make the best use of the skills that they bring to the table, I've asked them to come and do a new flying formation with the senior leadership team. Given John's excellent track record in fiscal affairs as well as his specialized expertise in public finance, I've asked him to take on a role in the department that allows him to specialize in that area with a purview on financial reporting, fiscal compliance with state and federal agencies, and other public finance-specific duties. And meantime, I've asked Jen Hockenhall to take on the management responsibilities in the department as controller. And so both of them will continue to work with you in their respective roles. But I hope you'll congratulate them on their good work. And I know they're both looking forward to working with council going forward. Probably don't need to remind you that Smart Streets is complete. We've been getting a lot of input, a lot of good input, although we know there are a few things to tweak, including signal timings and the pedestrian lights on some of the crosswalks. And so if you hear of any issues, please relay them to us because Public Works team is working to make sure that as we go into the rest of the year, we're making sure any rough edges are sanded off. Also today, we had the pleasure of kicking off the bike share program for the city. So we're really excited to be one of the first in the country to have a dockless program, which is why we were able to do this without any kind of appropriation or financial request. The bike is basically its own station. It's got a GPS. It can lock itself up. If somebody does help themselves do a bike in an unauthorized way, it can tell people where it is. And we will, at least until Seattle catches up to us, we'll have the largest deployment of dockless bikes in the bike share program in the country. So very excited to try this out. There's an app. I've got it on my phone and it's pretty user-friendly. And we're eager to get information from constituents on how they feel that it's serving. We are soon going to get a report, I know later in the end of the month, from the working group that asked to come together on the issue of chronic homelessness. So we're looking forward to implementing recommendations on how to deal with the issue. But I did want to take this opportunity to clarify before the council that it is the policy of the city that there will be no encampments in the city this year. We are going to continue to enforce regulations in order to protect public safety and public order when it comes to any kind of encampments that are placed in the city. And of course, we continue to refer people to the many services and organizations that exist to help people struggling with issues that keep them outside of the homeless system that we have. And of course, we have the FUSE Center coming online later this year that we think will provide housing for those with substance abuse and mental health issues. The South Shore process is going forward. There will be more deliberations in the county on this, but we're very excited about the possibility to reduce travel time to 90 minutes between South Bend and Chicago. And the thing I really wanted to stress on that is that this is a multi-layered, intergovernmental and bipartisan cooperation. So this is involving federal, state commitments from four different counties as well as the city. And we're committing to fund a piece that we think will account for about 12 minutes of that reduction in time. But it's not there yet. So we're urging county officials to join the other three counties that have stepped up along with the city and the state. And we assume the federal Department of Transportation. And last but not least, the city's received recommendations at the end of the process of gathering public input on a very ambitious set of improvements for parks and trails. We've had four public community forums, total of about 600 people across the course of those forums, as well as 32 focus groups and neighborhood meetings. And really see an opportunity to make improvements throughout the neighborhoods as well as make the best of our neighborhoods. And so we're very excited to see that continue to take shape and roll that out in the years to come. And of course, we'll be sharing more with council as that takes shape. Plenty of other things going on, but I'll stop myself there. I wanted to share a few of those highlights. And again, appreciate the opportunity to bring that to council.
Thank you. Mayor, would you take a few questions?
Be happy.
Regina is first district person. This is the burden you have to bear as second district person. So you've got to start.
I don't know. I'm just excited about the bikes. I want to know when can I find, where can I find one?
Downstairs.
Downstairs, I might ride one home tonight.
You could.
Never know.
You've got two in the lobby.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any update, Mayor? Appreciate it.
Just with regards, excuse me, with regards to the ongoing circumstances with the South Shore. There've been a number of concerns about relocation in the, I believe, the Ardmore area. That's a bad question. At the Ardmore area, I think there's parts of it that may be in the city, but it's all county, is it not? But I was under the impression Ardmore was not part of the city of South Bend.
I think that most of the acquisitions would be outside city limits, but I'd have to, I'd have to get the details.
If we get some more information on that, because I've had a lot of questions. I think that it seems like something certainly worthwhile, but having all the facts when you have the questions.
Sure.
Makes it a lot easier to explain just what the responsibility is. Thank you.
Vice President Davis?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor. I'd like to give an update regarding how many of the Lippert jobs are staying in South Bend? I know the, there was reports and there's been conflicting information I've received that all the jobs leaving the Sample Street area and going to Missoula are, how many are there and how many are staying? Are you have any of that information tonight?
Don't have those figures handy, but I'd be happy to run those down and get them back to you.
And then also with that same thing, in terms of being able to keep some of those jobs here, what was our city role in working with Lippert regarding that? Because there have been some abatement issues that we had back in the past. How does the move address issues regarding the abatements that this, we as a council and administration pass? Does the removal of jobs and all those kinds of issues affect that? And then what is city legal and all of them doing in terms of working to recoup or to address those issues with Lippert?
Thanks. Yeah, I know that development agreements, of course, often contemplate some kind of specific commitment or an amount of time that promised jobs were to be retained. So I'll go back and find out which, if any, of those might have applied in this case.
I appreciate that. And the other issue in terms of the Sample Street, Olive Bridge.
Yes.
I was told that that was going to be done this month. Are we still on schedule for that?
I was told the same the last time I asked, but I'll see if there's anything more to add to that.
Yeah. And last, practical for this issue, in terms of how many houses in South Bend are targeted to be removed if this project for the South Street, moving to South Shore, South Shore come to fruition? What are we looking at? Is there another, different people have sent me different alternative routes?
Right.
Are we looking at having the speed at the same time of a design that will not affect people's homes?
So there are a number of possible routes that could theoretically accomplish the objective, which is to have the train, as you know, the train currently comes from the west and then it makes its loop around the airport, goes through about a dozen grade crossings, and then comes in on the eastern side. And that alone accounts for, I think, more than 10 minutes of the difference between how fast the train is and how fast the train could be. And so the thought is to basically cut that loop and just run it straight to the west side. There are, I know, a number of different possibilities on exactly how you get from the existing path to the west side of the airport. And each one would have a different number of acquisitions that would be required in order to achieve it. I think that's one of the things that the engineering group is trying to resolve right now is essentially what are the options? And once they've identified a number of options that would meet the engineering objective, in fact, in order, you know, which one of them would work physically, then the next question becomes, okay, how do you take account of the desire to have the minimum impact from anybody who would not want to be part of that acquisition and really trying to minimize that? So I think that's one of the things that should guide the thinking about what the final route ought to be. And that is one sense in which just because that's sponsored by the city, to get to Dr. Varner's question, even if some of the people impacted would be outside city limits, the city has some responsibility to those people because we'd be responsible for the acquisition.
How soon will we be able to get that information?
I know that rest availability is planned for Friday. I don't know that it would have all the answers to the questions you raised, but we can certainly make sure that there will be some sense of how those questions are going to be approached.
I appreciate all that.
Mr. Wardy? Just been watching with interest the development of the old transport site and the completion of all the infrastructure. I need that, I know that needs to come first, but I think that's going to be an exciting, really, addition to the east bank of the river.
We think so too. You know, there's been a lot of talk of added residential units downtown, but very few of those are single-family format. So it'll be a welcome addition to the mix.
That's all. No questions. Thanks for the presentation.
I'm fine. Thank you.
No, not at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks again for the opportunity.
Appreciate it. This time we'll move on to entertain motion to rise and adjourn.
Some moves.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the meeting where the full council meets as a committee. During each ordinance, the public will have an opportunity to speak either in favor or against. Your comments will be limited to five minutes per bill.
With that, could I please have a presenter for, or would the city clerk please read 3917?
3917. Public carrying on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending subparks D and F 3 of chapter 4, articles 4, section 4-45 of the South Bend Municipal Code addressing mobile food vendors and mobile vending vehicles.
The committee, Community Investment Committee met today and we send this forward favorably. Is there a presenter?
Yes, that is me. Tim Scott, 711 First Avenue. This is a collaboration between Gavin Furlik, Karen White, myself. I want to thank Aladeen DeRose for editing and amending in the city administration as well as DTSP on the food truck ordinance. We took a look at the current ordinance. We actually talked to businesses within the downtown area as well as with other food trucks. We wanted to make it a little more business-friendly. With that in mind, we extended the time from four hours to eight hours. We had food vendors that by the time they got set up, they were ready to serve, their time limit was upon them, then they had to tear down. So preferably, especially there was a couple pizza oven vendors that had food trucks that by the time everything got hot, up to temperature, they were up against the time limit. So looking at it and looking at the current brick and mortar restaurants, they were fine with going to the, to the eight hours over the four hours. So we went to there. To make it a little more business-friendly, besides the annual fee of $525, we added a one-day license for $50, a 30-day license for $130, and a three-month license for $200. So there is other options for people with food trucks that want to come into the area, try out the market before, I guess you'd say, totally commit and buy in. So those are the changes to the food truck ordinance. Appreciate your support and we'll take any questions.
Are there any questions from council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, we'll move back to the council. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve. I think the full council favoring.
Second.
All of those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. With that, I will entertain a motion to rise and adjourn.
Some moves.
Second.
All of those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Full council is now back in session. Ms. Fowler, would you please give reading, third reading to 3917?
3917. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending subparks D and F 3 of chapter 4, articles 4, section 4-45 of the South Bend Municipal Code addressing mobile food vendors and mobile food vending vehicles.
Motion for passage?
Second.
Ms. Fowler, roll call, please.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Wardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlik?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Thank you. We'll move on to resolutions. Ms. Fowler, would you please give reading to 1739?
Do we need to?
Okay. I apologize. I thought we did a committee. We didn't have to do it here.
Motion to continue, 1737?
Second.
To 724, yeah.
Second.
Just one quick question and comment. I just want to let everybody, we did have discussion on this this afternoon, but it was not the discussion we did come to an agreement that we needed to postpone it. So we had discussion this afternoon and will be moved to what, was that 724?
Mr. Furlik, would you please restate your.
Motion to continue, 1737 to 724.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Aladeen for the clarification. Ms. Fowler, could you give reading to 1739, please?
1739. A resolution of the city of South Bend waiving petitioner Hoffman Hotel Apartment Housing Partners LP noncompliance with the Indiana Code 6-1 dot 12 dash 16 ESQ.
Thank you.
Community Investment sends this forward favorably.
Thank you. Is there a presenter?
Yes.
State your name and address, please.
Frank Augustino, 131 South Taylor Street. I am presenting for the petitioner. This involves the rehabilitation of the office building that was at 120 West La Salle. It's been converted to artist apartments. Took about 40,000 square feet, made a livable space there, affordable space for persons downtown. They invested over $5 million into the project. It has created one permanent position of $35,000 for the manager then of the premises there at that point. The heart of the issue though goes to, there was a Form 322 required to enact the abatement, to put it to that. Unfortunately, that was missed by the petitioner. Why was that missed? It corresponds back and forth with the redevelopment office, Jason Redevelopment Office. There's a notice from the assessment for reassessment, which triggered the time period to file that. All those things, the petitioner recognized, the petitioner has its own fault in coming forward in this, but there's a process here that recognizes a waiver system. And the petitioner would ask the council to exercise its discretion to grant the waiver given the rehabilitation of the project, given the benefit and the construction jobs that it brought in, the permanent position for the manager, the benefit of the housing, the affordable housing for artists. Also, in terms of the financing for this entire project, this is really a necessary element to close the construction loan on the project. And without that, without that, it would, it would put in jeopardy the closing of the loan on the project. The petitioner would ask then that the council exercise its discretion to grant a waiver for the late filing of the Form 322.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Thank you. We'll open up to the public. Anyone wishing in public to speak in favor of 1739, please come to the podium. Yes, sir. State your name and address.
Jesse Davis, P.O. Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. I mean, I'm in favor of, you know, the artist housing and all that. I guess I just had a couple of questions. There's been a lot of contention over that building as far as whether it's artists who were actually living there or has been opened up to actually anyone, including section 8. They supposedly hired security there. I saw some very weird signage. That was in elevators a while back that was posted on social media. So I mean, I'd be kind of curious as to, did they adhere to all of those things that were agreed to in this abatement? I know we give a lot of abatements out. And then also I just kind of wonder, you know, if a homeowner or a business owner forgets to pay their taxes and file proper paperwork, can we come to the council and say, hey, look, you know, can you give us a waiver? We get them. We have to suffer for it. So I'm not sure, you know, I'm all for the housing. I'm just not sure that I think you guys should be allowed to give a waiver. I think that should be in the tax man's office.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak against 1739, please come to the podium. Seeing, we'll turn it back to council.
Motion to adopt 1739?
Second. Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Wardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlik?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Thank you. First reading, of course. Ms. Fowler, would you please get first reading of 4117?
4117. First reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property. The alleys to be vacated is the first north-south alley east of William Street, Portage Avenue, from the south right-of-way of West Navarre Street to the north right-of-way of West Marion Street for a distance of approximately 110 feet and a width of 14 feet, being a part of the city of South Bend, Portage Township, St. Joseph County, Indiana.
Thank you.
I move this bill be sent to Public Works and Property Vacation Committee and set for a second reading and public hearing on 724.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 4217, please.
4217. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations in 2017 of $5 million from the Park Bond Fund 201.
Motion to send the personnel and finance for 724?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 4317.
4317. First reading on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 1237 and 1303 North Ironwood Drive and 1304 North Rosemary Lane, Councilman District Number 4 in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
I move this be sent to the Area Plan Commission for hearing on 815 and then assigned to the Zoning and Annexation Committee for 828.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 4417, please.
4417. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations in 2017 of $70,000 from Department of Community Investment Operating Fund 211.
I move that this bill be sent to Personnel and Finance Committee, set for second reading committee hearing on July 24.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you all. We'll move on to unfinished business.
Mr. President?
Yes, Dr. Varner?
I'd like to take a moment to address Mr. Davis's question with regards to the tax abatement and the waiver that Mr. Davis has a chance of. I want to address that, your question with regards to this case. This has not been an uncommon occurrence. The initial filing, which is the first year that they have to do to get all their ducks in order, a number of abatement people missed that for whatever reason without signing any court. The understanding, Ms. Augustino is here, I don't think I'm talking out of school. The understanding is that we can correct the record the first time and allow for it, but there's eight or nine or 10 more years left in the abatement. They're expected to comply the rest of that, and that was the understanding. So we allow it to get, make sure it's straightened out and after that, it's on that.
Yeah, it is state law for that tax abatement, unfortunately, not for personal. So state Indiana. So, thank you. Anything else under unfinished business?
Just clarifying.
Vice President Davis?
Now, the one for 4317, what day was that again?
4317. Area Plan Commission for 815 and second reading public hearing 828.
828.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You good?
So now with those, I've got.
Okay. Anything else? Anything other unfinished, anything under new business? I will delve into detail later on our new business. At another council meeting, we are getting a ton of special exceptions, a ton of issues regarding zoning. And I know it's not an easy task. It was taken up in, what, 2004? Very expensive, outside consultants through the administration to look at zoning, but we need to look at it again. And what we need to do is, we'll kind of develop this as it goes, learn some needs either from council, from citizens, and from administration on what needs to happen with the zoning ordinances. We are up here way too often on special exceptions, so this is a generalized statement that we'll delve into. We have asked the clerk's office to look at the last year or so of what the special exceptions are coming before council as far as that data and see if there's any clarity to what we need to look at to address in zoning and error approved. So, any other new business? None? Okay, we'll open up to the privilege of the floor. This is where citizens can come and speak to the common council. They have three minutes each to give your name and address. And you cannot talk about anything on the agenda that was here tonight, even friendly confines in Denham, even though it was continued. Please state your name and address. Gavin Furlik will keep time and he'll give you about 30-second exit warning before your time is up. Thank you. Go.
Short and sweet. Jesse Davis, P.O. Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. After the mayor came up and spoke, he disappeared real quick. So I'm going to ask the council members to please give some detailed information and some clarity on what he meant by the city will not allow any homeless encampments. This has been challenged all over the United States on state levels, local levels, and also constitutionality. So, it was my understanding after reading most of the ordinances and laws that if someone is resting on a sidewalk, which is open 24 hours a day to the public, and they do not have a domicile constructed, meaning a park or box house or a tent per se, that there's really not a whole lot that can be done to make them leave. I understand that the business owners on Main Street do not want them down there. Most of those people have major physical handicaps, mental handicaps, and all the services that they utilize on a daily basis for breakfast, lunch, dinner, clothing, showers, is all centralized right there in downtown. That's why they have their so-called encampments near downtown and in that area. If we're not going to have a way to house these people, cold weather will be upon us very quickly. And I will tell you this, if I have to go sleep on a sidewalk under a bridge and let the police come out there and try to remove me to prove a point, I'll be more than happy to do that, and you know I will, and I'll challenge it in a court of law. You can't just say, hey, we're not going to allow this without having a remedy somewhere. And I understand there are fuse projects going up. I approached the mayor. I showed him a building that they could have bought for $500,000 and turned the key and pretty much moved 30 some people in. They chose not to do that and chose to spend $3 million to build a building that'll house about 30 people. So, I want some clarity, and I want some definition on what it is they're going to do to keep the encampments from being that. You can't just say, hey, we're going to lock these people up. Cost us a fortune to do that. Housing First is much cheaper. There's been many opportunities, many meetings. The mayor's committee hasn't made much forward movement that anybody's aware of, but there's other groups working on it. So, we need to find a solution to that, not just say, hey, we're not going to allow it and just leave that out as a vague statement because there's a lot of legal ramifications open there.
And I'll interject, definition of encampment from the city. What is that? So, all right, thank you. Next, name and address. Come on up. State your name and address, and you have three minutes each.
My name is Jacob Crane. My address is 281501 Edgewood Street, Elkhart, Indiana. I'm a member of the Princess Mutawaka Society, C.A.R. Several South Bend Common Council resolutions have been made, one as far back as October 28, 1941, signed by then-mayor J.L. Pavy concerning the perpetual care of certain loss in city cemetery of South Bend, one which is my interest of Vice President Skyler Colfax, Lot 4, Block 1, Range West, concerning his gravesite. Most recently, Resolution Number 4226-13 filed in the clerk's office January 2013, signed by all common council members and Mayor Pete Buttigieg proclaiming March 23, Skyler Colfax Day. This revolution seems to be just in the wind, and South Bend does not celebrate this day in any way, shape, or form ever since the first time that Skyler Colfax Day was recognized and celebrated. The Skyler Colfax Chapter NSDAR has recognized and celebrated this important day with a ceremony at the former home of Skyler Colfax on the corner of Taylor and Colfax Streets. Passed of the 13th, amended of the Constitution afterwards, there was a wreath laying ceremony at the Skyler Colfax Monument in the city cemetery. Thank you.
Excellent.
Hello.
In your name and address.
My name is Charles Crane IV. My address is 281501 Edgewood Street. I'm a member of the Princess Mutawaka Society, C.A.R. And quoting in part of the actual resolution, "Skyler Colfax was a delegate to the 1848 Whig Convention in 1849. He led the opposition of the provision in the new constitution for the state of Indiana, which bared African-Americans from settling in the state or from purchasing property. And anti-slavery whigs like Skyler Colfax sought to build a new party, which eventually merged as the Republican Party. And he worked to affirm anti-slavery plank in their platform when he arrived as a new congressman in the House of Representatives in 1855. Colfax served as the chairman of the committee on post offices and posters where he was known for battling southern representatives over the slavery issue, and it was reported that Mr. Colfax took active part in the debate and traveled wildly in speaking at countless Republican and anti-slavery events, which helped unify the party for the 1860 presidential election. Skyler Colfax was president in the White House when President Abraham Lincoln signed the Annunciation Law Commission in December 1863. Skyler Colfax was elected Speaker of the House of Representatives. On April 14, 1865, Skyler Colfax met at the White House with President Abraham Lincoln to discuss reconstruction and was invited by Lincoln to join him at the Ford Theater. Skyler Colfax declined the invitation. He was to awake earlier, early the next morning to start a long tour of mining regions of the western states and territories between the Rocky Mountains and the Pacific Ocean. He instead was awakened with the news of the assassination attempt on President Lincoln and spent the remainder of the night at Mr. Lincoln's bedside until the death of President Lincoln the next morning. In 1868, U.S. S.S. Grant was elected President of the United States, and Skyler Colfax was elected as the vice president. But Skyler Colfax became the first Speaker of the House of Representatives to be ever-elected vice president. After leaving office in 1872, Skyler Colfax began a career as a public lecturer on his wartime relationship with President Lincoln.
20 seconds.
Former Vice President, Skyler Colfax, well, former President Skyler Colfax died on January 13, 1855, at Mann-Caddell, Minnesota. He was returned to South Bend and was buried at the city cemetery of South Bend.
Thank you. Name and address.
My name is Carol Nichols, 30164 County Road 22, Elkhart, Indiana. I am the Regent of the Skyler Colfax Chapter NSDAR. This resolution goes on to say that because of the countless contributions made by Skyler Colfax, his loyalty as a leader, an unsung champion of the passage of the 13th, 14th, and 15th amendments, as a leading orator, a dedicated public servant of Speaker of the House, and the 17th Vice President of the United States should be publicly honored and celebrated. Then on June 25, 2013, Resolution Number 4263-13 recommends the establishment of a five-year action plan for the revitalization and preservation of historic city cemetery. This resolution notes that recorded burials of Peter Rook, the revolutionary soldier, prominent African-American families such as the Bryans and the Powleys, with the cemetery being noted for never being segregated, and where there are reported as many as 14,800 final resting places, with as many as 1,000 of these sites are for our military, and 300 of which are Civil War veterans. All on 21.36 acres with the historic ornate and grave gates being erected in 1899. There are mayors, judges, grandparents of President McKinley, the first Civil War soldier who was buried there and killed from St. Joe County, John Otten. That was another resolution. It was supposed to be John Otten Day that has never been heard of again. Okay, Congressman and Colonel in the Union Army during the Civil War, Norman Eddy; South Bend Police Officers Lewis Kelly, who was killed in a robbery; Congressional Medal of Honor recipient, Private Enoch Wees; South Bend Police Officer Howard Wagner, who was killed by the John Dilliner gang back in 1934; plus, of course, our Vice President, Skyler Colfax. These are just to name a few who are buried in historic cemetery. It is further noted that back in 2009, the Historic Preservation Commission of South Bend and St. Joseph County partnered with the Skyler Colfax Chapter NSDAR to collaborate together to promote preservation of the city cemetery. With its mission statement to preserve-
You have 30 seconds.
-share carefully and treat reverently this Howard, hollowed, and historic site. The common council went on to say in part, "All things taken in consideration," and this resolution has been unanimously adopted. Resolution 4263-13 was signed by all council members and Mayor Peter Buttigieg.
Catherine Marie Schultz. I live at 11315 Birch Tree Drive in Oseau, Indiana. Finally, Resolution 4277-13 formally requesting assistance to use a Vice Presidential Seal on a new gravesite monument to properly honor the commemorative, the decorative public service to our county and the civil rights of Skyler Colfax, 17th Vice President of the United States. The common council agreed to help obtain this new headstone for Vice President Colfax by sending this resolution to the President Barack Obama, Vice President Joseph Biden, and General White attorney Catherine Reimer. Needless to say, none of these resolutions are being kept. Leads me to ask that the South Bend Common Council take a second look at these resolutions and comply with these actions taken by the South Bend Common Council, and to move forward to resolve these issues of why these resolutions are not being enforced. I look forward to returning to address these resolutions with South Bend Common Council. Thank you for your consideration. Carol Nichols, Skyler Colfax Chapter Regent.
Thank you. Next, name and address, please. We'll get back to you.
Hello.
She took some pictures out of sight to you.
My name is Roberta Hudson Strong, 218 South 29th Street, South Bend, Indiana. My question is, this is my question, am I the only 73-year-old who suffered severe physical trauma from the deafening, nerve-shattering, nonstop explosions caused by the fireworks that were exploded in celebration of the Fourth of July? Each year, this severe physical trauma becomes more deadly. I felt like I was capitulated into a war-torn city under heavy military siege with absolutely no way to escape. My life was definitely in danger. I pray that God may somehow hear the desperate pleas of the elderly who were helplessly dragged into this savagery without mercy.
And thank you. Next, name and address, please.
My name is Samuel Brown, 222 East Navarre Street, South Bend, Washington, D.C., for Washington, D.C., for a better government. First of all, I'd like you all, in just three minutes, to thank the clerk's office, you're doing a fine job, the whole staff, for getting out messages and keeping it updated in the city. I want to commend you, Ms. Fowler, and your whole staff. You do an excellent job. I want to thank Ms. Preston. I want to thank Mr. Scott. And I also want to thank Oliver Davis for the fine job they have done and tried to support me with my drug house. I'm meeting with Mr. Kenneth Lane, who's over at Buse, uh, property, at 9:30 in the morning. And we're going to see, we're going to keep going. And I want to also thank past council member, Dea, for calling in and, uh, wanting to help me with my Crusade District Drug House in a community that's affected my family. But we got to get the drug house shut down. There'd be shooting on the Fourth of July. I was out of town. Tell me to get back. My wife told me to call my daughter, and she's sitting right over behind me. The boys was shooting the bang-bang guns. Got to drive by shooting. Shot took there at the drug house. Drug house returned fire again. My grandchildren drove across the street. Drug house got to be shut down. I said, it can't go on. And we don't want to do it the hard way. We're trying to do it the right way. Drug house got to be shut down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next, name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Stu Castle, 4022 Kennedy Drive, South Bend, 46614. I wanted to say I attended that budget class. It was excellent. I'm so glad that was held. I think it's great to educate the citizens on how tax dollars are being spent in that process. I'm hoping that there'll also be a class on tips, so that people can understand tips and how they're being spent, particularly in their own neighborhood. So, thank you. That was a great class. The Ironwood Corby Roundabout meeting, there were about 22 queues. There were about 10 people in each row, 22 rows. So, there were about 200 people that were against the roundabout, and I think that the council needs to take that into account. I also heard from disability communities that people who are blind or in a wheelchair or in some way slower can't safely cross, and they go to that shopping center, that Martin's area, to shop because they don't drive, and they walk to it and walk back. They feel like in a roundabout, there's no way to stop traffic so they can safely get across, particularly in the winter. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention. I attended a meeting in Chicago where they, Chicago actually made money on deconstructing houses, which meant they made money selling the materials, they hired people who needed to be hired that were parole or whatever, and they kept the materials out of landfill. So, going forward, I'd really like the council to think about on projects where you're taking something down, to do it in an eco-responsible way. And I had that information. I gave it to the city. I gave it to redevelopment before the thousand houses came down. They didn't seem to care. I'm hoping to revisit that we'd be more eco-friendly. I also wanted to bring up, again, possibly having a morgue. I had a discussion with the chief of police. It ties up a lot of his officers to go back and forth to either Kalamazoo or Fort Wayne. There's a chain of custody problem. It slows down the process for prosecutors actually prosecuting the case. So, it may be that actually having a morgue here may be cost-effective. Just something to consider. I'm curious if there's more information about the status of the water system. My understanding is that it's pretty dilapidated and well past needing a lot of repairs.
You have 20 seconds.
So, it would be nice to hear about that, because we're all concerned about water. We've heard of Flint and all that, and so I'd like to know more about that. When I was at the budget meeting, we talked about roads. There's only a minuscule amount of roads to get done every year, how many miles or whatever. And they said, well, we're on the 100-year plan.
Your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, name and address, please. Come on, don't be shy. Line up.
My name is John Tugman. I live at 15932 Presswick Lane in Granger, Indiana. And I have my own timer. And I'd like, my purpose is to get, to ask the council to look at a particular neighborhood of South Bend in a slightly different way, and then to invite you to an event. I would like to pass out these maps because it's sideways on the, uh, 1334. Yes? How's it looking here, okay?
No, we can't hear you, but unless you hold that thing.
This is, you can't, this is a four-square-mile part of South Bend. It's north of Lincoln Way, east of Bendix, south of Lethrop, and west of the river. The natural hub of this neighborhood is the intersection of Eldwood Avenues and Portage Avenue. And if you look at this piece of South Bend, that is a hub and with spokes out into all the neighborhoods around it, the Near Northwest Neighborhood, the North Shore Triangle, Keller Park, Woodlawn, Pen Hook, Far Northwest, and Dambrolo Sal area. There's some areas in that that are not under any particular neighborhood. It's held together by this intersection that has a grocery store, a pharmacy, a liquor store, a laundromat, a fire company. And it really is an easy-to-get-to place for all the people in this collection of neighborhoods. If you'll turn that hand out over to the other side, you'll see, however, that there's some problems with it. And that is, it is, first of all, it is divided up into eight or nine separate little neighborhoods, some of which are very active and some of which are not. The Near Northwest Neighborhood, based there at Portage in California, is very active, very well organized, and lots of good things. The rest of the areas are not. It's also split up among three of you different council members. Mr. Scott has a good portion of this area, but this area is nevertheless a fairly small portion of his entire district. Mrs. Broden has just the North Shore Triangle, but it's probably no more than seven or eight percent of her total district. So, the district's influence, it's diluted because it's split among several of you on the council. If you take the total population of this area, it's 12 and 1/2 percent or 1/8 of the city of South Bend. So, as 1/8 of the population, does it get 1/8 of your time? Does it get 1/8 of your attention?
You have 30 seconds.
Does it get 1/8 of your budget? Finally, I would like to close with an invitation to all of you to join an event that's happening on Saturday, on Saturday, the 5th of August, that is a neighborhood gathering for all of these areas, being co-sponsored by five different churches, the Far Northwest Neighborhood, and Martin Supermarkets.
And sir, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, name and address.
Hello, my name is Don Goomich. I live at 2015 Peachtree Lane. I spoke to the council. I spoke to the council before on May twenty-second, when we were discussing the development of the proposed development of a church property on Ironwood, which was mentioned earlier today. I just wanted to refresh the memory of the council that that discussion was halted, and all decisions were postponed.
Hold up. This is the same as forty-three seventeen on the council agenda. We cannot speak about it.
It's Ironwood.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hang on there.
There was a first reading on this.
Ironwood was on here.
For the new zoning.
Yes. We cannot speak about it. Here's the reason why. The reason is, anything on agenda, everybody is given notice and fair time and equity on speaking on a subject matter. If you're here to speak on it when no one else is able to, it's not fair. It's part of the state law. So, anything to do with that, you cannot speak on it tonight. There will be, what did we move it to?
They can come on the twenty-fourth to speak.
Yes. Yeah, it will have plenty of time.
No, they can come on the twenty... Given the fact that this was a first reading tonight, they can come anytime in July, they can come anytime.
When it's not being agenda.
We were not giving ours that was on the agenda. I think that was...
It doesn't matter. Yeah.
I understand.
It happens, sorry.
It was from that standpoint.
That's the law and fairness on...
But, on the meeting on the twenty-fourth, the meeting on the second meeting in August, and the third...
Second meeting.
The second would be the twelfth of August and the twenty-sixth of August. So, all three meetings, because this was...
Twenty-eighth, actually, yeah.
The twenty-eighth, fourteen to twenty-eighth. Fourteenth to twenty-eighth of August, and two weeks from tonight, you can have a thirty... make the whole presentation from there, given the fact that this was put on the agenda this past week.
Yeah. It will be voted on on the twenty-eighth, barring any continuations or whatever. At that time, everybody is willing to speak publicly on it.
It has been moved to the next area plan meeting, which is what day?
Eight fifteenth. August fifteenth.
No, 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 no.
Area plan is August fifteenth, zoning is in council.
So, it's going to be on the eight fifteenth in the area plan, and it's going to be also on that day, so make sure they add this to the agenda part of it. Now, you can give counsel without mentioning that.
I think it'll also be in the Tribune this week, so we'll get...
Can you guys have pictures to look at?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nothing on the agenda tonight, unfortunately. With that...
We can, we're here to talk to you afterwards, though.
With that, make a motion to adjourn?
Somebody...
All in favor? Aye. Goodnight, everybody.
We'll certainly talk to you now.
I didn't know the song.
I know. I know the song, you didn't mention that.
Well, I knew the first reading, but that wasn't...
We got the two songs, we got the song.
Thank you.
I have the last. Thank you, Oliver.
And I, I mean, you know, we took that, since it's a committee, I didn't get that.
So, there was mixed up apparently about solar types, because we...
That was me. Okay, no, that wasn't...
Yeah.
Yeah. She wants to... The state for sure, the zoning.